Welcome, everyone. I, Council President Walsh, call the October 28th Committee of the Whole Meeting to order at 6:30 PM. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meeting, so both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda item. So, members, the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, you go ahead and raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, you're going to press star three. If you're on a smartphone or a computer, look for the hand icon, or you can send the host a chat message. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing that portion of the meeting. So I'm going to wait a moment, see if anyone wishes to raise their hand, and I will ask the clerk if anyone has signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening.
We don't have any virtual members of the public with us tonight, and no one has signed up in advance to make comments.
Anyone in the room? We've got one member of the public and a bunch of staff members, so, you know, just do the check-in. Okay, so as a reminder, written comments can always be submitted. Email citycouncil@isicua.gov. So, we have one agenda item on our agenda this evening, COM 0038, the 2025-2026 Proposed Budget Overview, and I believe we are starting with Mayor Polly on that one.
Thank you, Council President, and good evening to the City Council. My name is Mary Lou Polly. I'm the mayor of the City of Issaquah, and I'll open up the presentation tonight with some comments. So, dear community members and dedicated City Council, I'm pleased to present my 2025-2026 Proposed Budget, the City of Issaquah's second-ever biennial budget. This budget was challenging to produce, as the fiscal outlook for the next two years is declining. Many hard choices were made to deliver a proposed budget that is balanced in revenues and expenditures while also maintaining healthy reserves. I'm grateful to all of the city staff who contributed to this budgeting process with creative ideas for reducing costs. While some general fund revenues, including property tax and BNO, Business and Operation Tax, remain strong, this proposed budget forecasts on reductions in construction sales tax and permit revenues, which are trends we've already been observing in 2024. This proposed budget also supports substantial increases in public safety costs, including jail, fire, and emergency services, and the provision of justice through Issaquah's Municipal Court. Rising insurance costs are also creating significant pressures on our financial picture. My budget, which totals $193.8 million in expenditures for 2025 and $202.6 million for 2026, respectively, across all funds, includes a proposed $66.7 million for 2025 and $68.3 million for 2026 in general fund expenditures. The 2025-2026 Proposed Budget represents $54.1 million, or a 15.8% increase from the 2023-2024 adopted budget, with the general fund budget at $7.6 million, or 5% lower than in the previous biennium. Despite these significant general fund reductions, my proposal remains shaped by our community's priorities. This plan makes investments in public safety. It preserves transportation investments as much as possible and maintains Issaquah's commitment to sustainability. The top priority of my proposed budget is clear: essential public safety investments. This includes changes to the management structure of our municipal jail, creating two new corrections sergeants, as well as reclassifying two current corrections corporals to sergeants, while eliminating the jail manager position. This will enhance jail support and safety at all hours of the day. I'm also proposing new investments for Issaquah's Municipal Court, which is currently located at City Hall Cell, the building that you're in. This was originally designed as a fire station. This aging structure was never well-suited for court operations and lacks the appropriate space, accessibility, and security features needed to operate a modern court. In addition, recent evaluations of this building have revealed it requires significant maintenance investments. Thankfully, we found a potential new location at the King County District Courthouse, which can lease us space. Co-locating with the King County Court is more efficient and enables better customer service and enhanced safety. To ensure the provision of justice, my proposed budget includes market rate compensation increases for our city prosecutor and public defenders. We are also anticipating a state Supreme Court ruling that would require Issaquah to triple the number of its public defenders. In total, the annual cost increases for our prosecutor and public defender contracts is $400,000. In addition, I propose changing a judicial specialist position from part-time to full-time in order to keep up with growing caseloads, as well as increases to interpretation services. Expenses for Eastside Fire and Rescue, which is our contracted fire and emergency service agency, also continue to grow to support staffing and capital investments. This budget reflects about $3.3 million increase during the next biennium, which is almost 20% from what was originally adopted in the 2023-2024 budget. Even though our financial restraints require reductions of some transportation investments, I am grateful the City Council adopted a dedicated revenue stream in 2023. This proposed budget invests $1.2 million each year for improved traffic management and congestion control. Last year, we piloted Metro Flex in Issaquah, which is an on-demand car pooling and transit connection service partnership with Metro Transit, and the response from our community was encouraging. This program works, and it meets many of our transit goals. Now that the demand in Issaquah is clear, I look forward to working with my fellow elected leaders to encourage Metro Transit to fund this service without city assistance, like it does for other communities. Over the long term, Issaquah cannot afford to fund services that are offered by other levels of government. As a result, my proposed budget does not continue funding for this most popular program. Meanwhile, Issaquah made historic investments in street and sidewalk maintenance during the past several years. I'm proud that these projects increased the safety and usability of our paved surfaces across the city. While we can now reprioritize some of those maintenance funds elsewhere, my proposed budget continues to support higher service levels than before the pandemic. In addition, recent equipment purchases will facilitate bringing more of this work in-house during the next biennium. Thanks to the revenue increases in our Sustainability Fund, I am proud that my proposed budget invests in key initiatives that further implement the Issaquah Climate Action Plan, including reducing residential and commercial emissions through electrification incentives and energy efficiency programming, decreasing city facility and fleet emissions through renewable energy and electrification, supporting solid waste diversion and food waste prevention initiatives, and enhancing the resiliency of city and community facilities. In order to develop a balanced budget in all departments, all departments excluding those that support public safety and justice provided recommendations that would reduce their expenses by at least 12%. I couldn't be prouder of our city team for their thoughtful and thorough approach to reducing costs while also maintaining the highest service levels possible for the community. Our approach to budget reductions includes the following: reducing professional service costs and bringing more services in-house, anything from planning studies to traffic control for construction projects. This will create more limitations on what we can get done and when we can get it done by. Using some one-time ending fund balances, some special city funds had accumulated extra ending fund balances over time as projects came in under budget or grant funds were realized. My proposed budget puts these one-time dollars back to work for the community. We are delaying or reducing capital projects. With fewer staff and less reliance on professional services or consultants, the capacity from my administration to implement these projects is also reduced. These projects still need to get done in order to maintain and appropriately provide infrastructure, but they must happen in future years. And last, but probably the most painful for me personally and professionally, is that this budget proposes reducing or reassigning staff. This proposed budget includes eliminating 18 positions, seven of which were vacant, positions that people currently have and are doing a great job in, but we can no longer afford to have. Along with my internal departments, I'm also asking the community partners we fund to share in cost-cutting measures. This proposed budget includes a 12% reduction in funding to several nonprofit organizations starting in the year 2026. This gives our valued organizations a year to prepare for reduced city funding. Anticipating in influx of local arts funding through the New King County Doors Open Program, I also recommend a 35% reduction to the city's arts grant program. Due to state-imposed restrictions on revenue collection, most cities in Washington are experiencing a structural deficit. Issaquah is no different. In order to address this deficit while still preserving a level of service that Issaquah residents expect, we must both cut expenses and raise revenues. My proposed budget includes increasing water, sewer, stormwater, and cable utility taxes from 3% to 4.5% in 2025 and to 6% in 2026. This would generate approximately $1.4 million of ongoing additional revenue in 2026 and beyond, while staying in step with tax rates of Issaquah's peer cities. Other increases to revenue include an update to our contracts with neighboring cities for jail and court services to better ensure Issaquah's cost recovery. In total, these contract updates would generate an additional $600,000 each year. I'm also proposing a small increase from 5% to 6% to cover growing technology costs for the community planning and development. This fee is applied to permit applications and will raise about $140,000 each year to help pay for permit software and associated technology. It's extremely important to maintain fair compensation for our city employees. I'm proud to work with an exceptionally talented staff, and retaining such a great team translates to consistent and quality services for our community. My proposed budget includes a 3.8% cost of living increase for nonrepresented employees, which matches the Consumer Price Index for workers, or the CPIW, in our area. Bargaining is ongoing for some of our union-represented teams. In addition, the proposed budget includes some salary adjustments determined necessary to keep salaries within our organization within market rate of our region. And meanwhile, equity remains a key focus of my administration. I am proud to have formed the city's first equity board, but our work is not done. Ensuring Issaquah is a fair and welcoming place requires ongoing dedication. My proposed budget includes $50,000 toward an equity assessment which will help establish Issaquah's futures goals and identify areas for improvement. Our long-term financial sustainability remains a challenge, as our proposed budget was largely balanced this time with one-time measures. As cost for public safety, maintenance of our aging infrastructure, and insurance continue to rise, the city must examine additional options to increase ongoing revenues. At the same time, we must also continue exploring funding options for the replacement enhancement of our aging infrastructure. This includes notable transportation, parks, and facility projects in the upcoming years that are currently unfunded. I look forward to working with the City Council and the entire community on implementing this budget and developing long-term solutions to our financial sustainability so that together we can ensure Issaquah continues to deliver an exceptional quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. And I think we've got Andrea Snyder coming up. Give us a presentation and the details.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Good evening, members of City Council and members of the community who may be watching. My name's Andrea Snyder. I'm the deputy city administrator, and I am serving currently as the interim CFO. Before we get into our budget presentation for you tonight, I just want to thank all of the staff who were involved in the drafting of the budget. As Mayor Polly noted, this year's budget was more challenging than budgets that we've done in the recent past, so really wanted to thank Nathan, Lisa, Suzie, they're all in the chambers right now, as well as Jillian, Dale, Steve, some of them are online. So, thank you to all the staff who've been working really hard to bring this together So, as we get started, a couple of things for you this evening. It is going to be a long presentation. We'll make it as quick as we possibly can for you, so there should be plenty of time to ask questions. But we do have some policy questions that you're going to see throughout council deliberations. Then we'll go into the budget priorities for this budget, some of the forces on the budget this year that were unique and that we faced throughout '25 and '26 and perhaps beyond, an overview of the general fund. The general fund is the big fund that most of the government operating services come out of, and then the proposed new revenues that Mayor Polly summarized. We'll talk a little bit about those and household impacts, and then departmental budget highlights and impacts. And we have the, almost the entire senior leadership team here to present on their departmental budgets, and then we'll go over next steps. So first, those policy questions. Does council agree with the budget priorities reflected in the proposed budget? These are some high-level questions for you to consider throughout the deliberations. And then, is council supportive of increasing the revenues as proposed? As Mayor Polly said, that's a utility tax rate from 3% to 4.5% in 2025 and up to 6% in 2026. Also, looking at the property tax would be, in the proposed budget includes a 1% increase that the city would collect on property tax. And then, for community planning and development, they have a tech fee that they apply to permits. Any permits that folks apply for, that would increase from 5% to 6% to help cover software costs. As a reminder, our budget process is related to the strategic plan. This year is a little awkward, as council has yet to adopt the amendments or any amendments to the strategic plan. We've gone through this process this year of trying to update the strategic plan, have gathered some community input, task force input, and so we've taken that feedback from that task force and that process and tried to incorporate it into the budget, and certainly use the strategic plan as guidance for where cuts should come from, where they shouldn't come from, et cetera. Budget priorities. So first and foremost, priority in the proposed budget is public safety. We've been talking a lot with council over the past couple of months about needs in police and jail corrections, as well as justice, municipal court, as we look at those prosecutor contracts, public defender contracts, and even the municipal court facilities itself, and eastside fire and rescue. And we've been talking with council about that as well. So all of those are public safety needs whose costs are increasing and have been increasing. We'll talk a little bit more about that later in the presentation to give you an understanding of what those increases have looked like. Other priorities included in this proposed budget are preserving sustainability initiatives. As Mayor Polly said, the Sustainability Fund is largely funded by an administrative fee that's applied to the recology contract. This is a general fund revenue. The City of Issaquah has typically in the past taken that revenue and applied it all towards sustainability initiatives. Council may recall recently increasing that fee by 3% and applying it all towards sustainability initiatives, but it doesn't have to be. And so what the administration has chosen is to continue to preserve sustainability initiatives as much as possible and not try to take the rest of that revenue and funnel it towards other uses. Also, enhancing equity. There's some equity project that we'll talk about a little bit later in this presentation. As Mayor Polly said, we're looking at maintaining investments in transportation as much as possible. You heard a summary of those cuts. We'll go into that a little bit deeper in the presentation later. Another priority was to continue to compensate staff fairly, and this was important because while we did have to lay off staff in order to balance this budget, we wanted to make sure that the staff that remain are paid commensurate to what the market would suggest. So that means there is money in this budget for 3.8% COLA or cost of living increase, and as well as money to continue to pay fair market wages based on our salary surveys that we've conducted. And finally, we wanted to make sure to cover obligations like our insurance obligations, which is a major driver on this budget, and we'll explore that in a little bit. Our approach to budget balancing, I think Mayor Polly already went over this in her opening remarks, so I'm not going to spend too much time on this slide, but really we left no stone unturned. And what I want to emphasize from here, yes, we looked at professional service costs and trying to bring more of those services in-house. We looked at delaying or reducing capital projects and the general fund contribution to those projects, spending down ending fund balance across other funds to save on the general fund contribution to those funds, staffing reductions we've already talked about, and an increase in revenues. But what I really want you to take away from this slide is how many of these measures are one-time savings versus something that's ongoing? And that's going to be a big theme of this presentation tonight, is talking about the structural deficit that we have, that we need to continue to work on, and this issue of one-time cost savings versus ongoing, something to keep in mind throughout the deliberations process as well. A quick summary of the staffing reductions that we had to perform. Seven of those reductions were vacant positions that we've eliminated in the proposed budget. That includes planning manager, the jail manager. Mayor Polly talked about adding in other staff to the jail instead of the jail manager. We can talk more about that later tonight as well. A recreation coordinator for the senior center, labor relations and risk manager, economic development coordinator, human services supervisor, and a part-time parks maintenance worker. We've also had a transfer, so we've tried to look at things like, well, if there's this position that we need to cut, do we have other needs that won't impact the general fund? That maybe we have other needs in utilities, and so that's what we've done with this transfer here. We have two limited-term employee assignments that were scheduled to end at the end of this biennium and that we're not extending, and that includes the transportation program coordinator who manages the Metro Flex project that Mayor Polly talked about earlier this evening, as well as a communications coordinator. And then we had seven layoffs, unfortunately, that were billed positions. Those staff are affected, and that's across different departments that are general fund-funded, and that includes an accountant, shop aide. Several cuts to community planning and development you'll see. As we talked about at the July City Council retreat, we do anticipate declines in construction sales tax and permit revenues, and so that's why you see a few more cuts in community planning and development as we see construction is declining. A recreation manager and a senior park planner are both in the Parks and Community Services Departments. So coming off of those layoffs, wanted to look at what is the personnel ratio per resident and look at that effect. So there's a lot going on on this graph, I understand. We can look at the green bars on the bottom, and that shows trends over time from 1999 all the way through 2026 with the proposed budget. And those green bars on the bottom show that really since about 2010, we've been mostly holding steady in terms of FTEs per capita. And you can see on the orange line, that's total FTE line, or full-time employee, you can see some events kind of punctuated to help make sense of the graph. So, any questions on this slide or so far? Great. Wanted to talk a little bit about some of the forces on this budget that are different from years past. So we know, and we've talked about this a lot with council, the structural deficit that most cities in Washington face, and that's including Issaquah. And we see here how the green line is our revenues over time from 2019 through the 2029 forecast, and the red line is our expenditures. And we see those pretty much meet in 2022 and then again in 2025. And so this is looking at actuals, of course, until the 2024 year, and then it's what we have budgeted. We can see that, over time, holding things constant, not adding to our expenditures, just thinking about what does inflation look like to our existing expenditures in the proposed budget compared to how much our revenues typically increase, that we do expect a deficit in future years. And then, as we look at the primary drivers of this deficit, some things that are unique in this budget, we've talked in the past about personnel as one of those drivers, but we wanted to pull out some of the other trends. So looking at our public safety, which is our number-one priority that we talked about in the budget, police, court, fire. So police is that top line in blue. We can see how much that budget is over time in relation to these other priorities, for example, and the cost increases from 2020 to 2023, and increasing even beyond that. A large part of that is personnel-related, but also as we look at insurance and other cost drivers. And then we have eastside fire and rescue, and you can see that is fairly level until we get to 2024, where we see those costs increasing. Next slide is going to paint perhaps even a better picture on this, which is the increases by percentage and the impact of the budget based on percentage. And when you look at things like police, municipal court, this does not include, so this does include the prosecutor and public defender contracts and some of their space needs, but eastside fire and rescue, insurance, facilities, et cetera, this is the percentage increase since 2023. See, you have an understanding of what is that increase from the last biennium to the end of the next biennium? And it's pretty substantial when through the same period of time, the CPI, or the Consumer Price Index, is 12% over the same time period. So when you look at things like 129%, 84%, you can see the dramatic increase and impact this is going to have on our budget. Also, during this time, sales tax, which we're going to talk about as one of our major revenue sources, sales tax during the same time period has decreased by 2%. So I've talked about one-time solutions to ongoing problems. It's important to understand that this budget was difficult to balance, and about 40% of those adjustments to that deficit that we're predicting for '25 and '26, 40% were ongoing adjustments. That includes the layoffs and the revenue proposals, but 60% are one-time adjustments. So that's spending down of ending fund balance, that's delaying capital projects, that's, et cetera. And so what that means is that in the future, those one-time adjustments are not available to us anymore. So as we look to even the next biennium, unless we solve some of our ongoing deficit issues, it may be more difficult to balance the budget over the next biennium. Looking at the general fund specifically, again, this is the fund that funds most of our government services on an ongoing basis. Here is a summary of our expenditures for the '25-26 Proposed Budget. As you can see, police, municipal court, and fire, those public safety-related departments provide a bulk of, or certainly a large share, about 43% of the expenditures out of the general fund. Sources of revenue, we can see sales tax is 31%, a major source of revenue for the City of Issaquah. It's been great for us. Other cities don't have such a large sales tax as a proportion of their total funding, but certainly it's a volatile source as well. Revenues per capita, this shows, again, trends over time, from all the way from 2003 to the 2026 proposed, so you can see what that tax burden is per person and how that has gone down and remained relatively stable over time with slight increases in the proposed years. Expenditures per capita, again, from 2003 through 2026, and you can see how those are a little bit more volatile than the revenues. Looking at our revenue and major sources of revenue and how those have trended over the past few years, you can see that top line in orange is sales tax. That's a major component of revenue for us. The next line is our departmental revenue, so that can be the permit fees or parks and rec fees, other grants as well, and other fees that the city would charge. And then, let's also want to identify utility tax. That's the yellow line on the bottom there. The reason why you see that increase from '24 to '26 is, of course, reflected in the proposal, is that increase the utility tax rate. Looking at sales tax in particular, there's various types of sales tax, so we wanted to break this down for you since it is such a large revenue source for the city. As we look at that top line, that's the retail trade tax, but we see it going up. It's going up because businesses are overall succeeding. It's going up because businesses are overall succeeding, the city's local economy is strong. That's exactly what we want to see. It's good news for the community. Let's look at that ugly red line down on the chart. So these are trends from 2013 through the proposed budget. You can see that red line is construction sales tax. It goes way up in 2021 as a lot of projects were shut down in 2020 from the pandemic, and then they were finished off in 2021. And then you see the decline from 2021 to 2023, and then continued, we're forecasting that. This is somewhat influenced by the national rates for borrowing, but at this point, it's something that we know that there's a trend across other cities in Washington State as well as the nation, and it's something that we're concerned about. One of the things, so you can see this impact from the decline in construction sales tax. At the same time, again, expenditures are rising. So this has a very big impact on our budget and was a huge driving force in the predicted deficit that we have. General fund historical trends, as we look at, I think there was a question from a council member earlier wanting to see a breakout in departments and looking at department budgets over time. So this is from 2018. This loosely tracks to some of our departments. You may know that we've made some changes in departments, some services going from one to another over time, so this isn't, you know, exact, but just taking a step back and looking at trends in departmental budgets and changes. You see police and public safety up there with the yellow line, and then changes also in parks. Some of these are reflective of grants that we've received. You see that giant spike in non-departmental from 2018 to 2020. That's the Bergsma Purchase, large purchase of land that the city made and also received some grants for. I'm moving pretty quickly here, so are there any questions? Okay, great. Looking at the five-year forecast for the general fund budget, we can see evidence of the structural deficit. So you see in 2025, it says undesignated fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. This is slightly different from what you'll see in the budget document, and that's only just because of rounding and how it was rounded across different charts. But it's 15% to 16% undesignated ending fund balance. And then with that continued in 2026, it was also a priority of the mayor that we maintain that 15% ending fund balance as part of this proposed budget so that we can ensure we have enough reserves if there's another downturn or something else were to occur. So we wanted to make sure to keep that 15% ending fund balance. It is a best practice for cities like ours. Looking forward to 2027 and beyond, you see that ending fund balance decrease to 5% in 2029. And again, it's a function of that graph we saw earlier where expenditures are rising at a faster rate than our revenues, holding everything else constant. So let's talk about revenues. Utility tax is our major... Yes, I see we have a question. Go ahead.
If that's okay, I have a couple of questions about the expenditures part. Thank you, by the way. Appreciate the thorough presentation. On the slide that describes the primary drivers list, one of the ones was facilities, and it said non-capital. So I was just curious what makes up non-capital facilities expenditures? Are examples there?
Go back to that.
Yeah.
So this is, great question, thank you. This is related to maintenance of our facilities. So this doesn't include, for example, we've been talking about a new fire station, we've been talking about what do we do for the city hall. None of those assumptions are included in the budget. This is really just looking at right sizing our maintenance. And the council may recall, you received a report earlier this year on trying to understand what the maintenance needs and the conditions are of the various facilities that we manage. And we need to invest a lot more in facilities. That was really the conclusion of the report. This budget tries to do some of that, but does not meet the expectations of the report, which I think included over $1 million a year in additional maintenance than what we've typically provided. So we have increased some of that operating, I'm sorry, some of that maintenance budget, but it's not to what was recommended in the report.
Facilities maintenance, got it. Now, a few slides later, let's see, several, actually. The general fund historic trends on revenue, where you show property tax, sales tax, BNO tax, and utility tax. I just wanted to clarify, so we are anticipating a decrease in BNO tax revenue over the biennium? Is that, over the next biennium, is that correct?
Yeah, and I think that this is really related to what was adopted and what we discovered in the '23, '24 biennium budget is that the BNO tax was anticipated to be higher than what we've seen in actual receipts. So that could be an error in forecasting that was made in '23 and '24. As we see from the chart, it's holding pretty steady from 2022 levels. So I think what we're seeing is more of a difference in what was forecasted over actuals, and I think there was an error in forecasting for '23, '24. So we've decreased it from the adopted budget of the last biennium.
Okay, thank you.
One more, go ahead.
Since there was a break in the action, on the ending fund balance slide, I am curious because the total ending fund balance from '25 to '29 goes down slightly, but the unrestricted ending fund balance goes down precipitously. So what are the restricted funds that are being reflected here?
Restricted funds include the affordable housing sales tax. So that's something that we have amassed a very large budget in for capital purchases and other things. We haven't been spending that down. This proposed budget does include using that affordable housing sales tax to cover the Arch Trust Fund contributions, for example, that are capital. We've also included more allocations of staff, behavioral health staff, to that affordable housing sales tax revenue source. So you see a spending down of that budget over time because we have accumulated such a large ending fund balance.
So is that, I mean, I'm just looking at, yes, really quick numbers. So in '25, it's $9 million, and then it's $9 million, and then it's $10 million, and then it's $12 million is the difference, and then it's $13 million. So it's creeping up. So is that just a result primarily of the 1%, 0.1% sales tax?
I believe so.
Okay.
I'm getting nods from Suzy, our budget manager, so yes, I think that's accurate.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead.
Really, and is the TBD, the Transportation Benefit District Sales Tax, is that also technically restricted revenue, or does that go to general?
It is restricted revenue. Great. New revenues. We are proposing an increase in the utility tax. It's a stepped increase from 3% to 4.5% in 2025, and then to 6% in 2026. So you see here on this table, highlighted in green font, is our current tax rate. It's 3% for water, sewer, stormwater, and cable TV. There are other components of utility tax that are already at 6%. So this increase in 2026 would make us 6% across the board of the various utility tax types. You can see a comparison of Issaquah against other cities, and a proposal to increase it to 6% might be on par with other cities. It's kind of all over the map in terms of what cities do. We anticipate the impact of raising the utility tax to be about $27 in 2025 on the average household. So for every 1.5% that the utility tax would be raised, there would be an impact to a single-family home, typical single-family home of about $27.34. That would equate to additional revenue raised, about $633,000 in 2025, and then a total of $1.26 million in 2026, and that would be in ongoing revenues. Another part of our revenue proposal within this budget is increasing our jail contracts. The city operates a municipal jail. We contract with other cities for jail services. And you can see that top row is our current rate that we charge, $115 a day for guaranteed beds versus what our proposed rate is in upcoming contracts. That's highlighted in red, $150 a day, with additional booking fees that would be added to these contracts. We don't have booking fees at this point, but it is somewhat common in the industry. This would raise approximately half a million dollars per year and would put us on the higher end. There's a lot of things that we've considered within establishing this rate, including how much it costs to run a jail and provide these services. We have a lot of insurance costs that have been increasing, food and medical services have been increasing as well, and we want to make sure that the Issaquah taxpayer is not reimbursing jail services for other cities. So there's other things to consider. You can see other rates for Linwood and SCORE are also, well, Linwood's higher, but SCORE is at 143 per day, but they also offer a lot more services than Issaquah jail does. And so for more complicated cases, people with higher medical needs, et cetera. So that's another factor in how we set the rates for the jail. And the police chief is also here to answer any questions you might have about this. Other revenue proposals...
One moment, we've got a question.
On the last slide, yep. It says SCORE, and then it has in parentheses Issaquah's rate. Does that mean they charge different rates for different jurisdictions?
They do.
That might be good to, since we're comparing against that, and that one looks like it's comparable to our proposed rate, it might be good to know what other rates, how much it varies for other jurisdictions, if that's only...
Okay, that's information we can provide at a future date. Thank you. Court contracts, similar thing. We want to make sure that the court services that we're providing, other jurisdictions, are reflective of the increase in costs that we've seen for the courts. And so we've redone the cost recovery model by looking at percent of filings. Previously, there was a minimum base charge for these other cities, but a decline in filings demonstrates the base charge is too low for cost recovery. And we're seeing a decline in filings, not necessarily because crime is reducing, but because fewer arrests are being made. Perhaps it's a shortage of police officers to make those arrests. That's more of the reason why we predict we're seeing a decline in filings from these other cities. The anticipated additional revenue from this adjustment to those contracts is about $100,000 a year, and again, with the attempt to make sure that Issaquah's not subsidizing the court costs of other cities. Other revenue adjustments, community planning and development has a tech fee, a technology fee that they apply to permits. We're proposing to increase that fee from 5% to 6% in order to help pay for permit software. Our permit software, Tracket, is living past its useful life and needs replacement in the next couple of years, and it's a very expensive and complicated software system. The anticipated additional revenue from this is about $140,000 per year. You can see how Issaquah's rate compares with other cities. Again, this would put us at a higher range for a technology fee applied to permits, but still not as high as Sammish. Okay, now, any questions before we move on to department budget presentations? Okay, great. Well, with that, then, I would like to welcome Chief Shwan.
Good evening. Thank you for having us, council members. First of all, our priorities for the police department are maintain our full staffing. Over the last three years, I've had over 220 chiefs' interviews to getting to the point where we have some good staff in our department. As you know, we don't have that many people in our department, and it's a process to get people through, and we want to have good people that are working here. And so we want to maintain that as much as possible. We are currently fully staffed in dispatch. We are almost fully staffed in patrol. We're only down three at this time, and we have interviews a full day, or two half-days coming up with 10 spots already full for those interviews. So we're hoping to get full in the next time, and we also have two in backgrounds. So we have a good possibility of that being close. And then we have two that are down in corrections right now with the hopes of this proposed budget possibility of two more as far as in sergeants' positions moving forward. Our another priority would be our jail operations, including the contract updates, which we've expressed to you as far as our fees go. We're going within market, and the biggest piece for that is in, and we haven't moved those very much in the past, and we've never had a booking fee, to my knowledge, in the past. And so that's helping with a lot of the different fees that are moving forward and what all our other agencies that are comparables are definitely doing at this time comparatively to what we were, like, had been mentioned. Those with mental health issues and medical issues, those are the ones and why we would ship out to other places or why other people might go to other locations. We're also increasing our people that show up. It used to be a $180 fee. It wasn't on the chart, but it used to be $180 if someone, for example, got a DUI in Spokane but lives over here, and they want to do their time here in our jail. They can just show up and do so, but they have to pay per day, and we've changed that up to $225 per day for someone that's doing that. So that's another fee that's been increased. And last year, approximately, we had about 160 that actually were booked in our jail for that specific piece. We also renewed our programming that we've had in the past because we've put people as our community resource officer back in specialties. We have someone that's now in that position, Officer Helms. We also have someone in our traffic division. We've moved Corporal Philbright to that position, and we hope to move another traffic officer soon, and as soon as we get a couple more people off-field training, and we have a couple more graduating in the next couple of months from the academy. So some of those programs that we're going to be doing are our community academy, used to be called the Citizens Academy, now it's, we do the community academy, and as well as our parent project, and maybe our Pals on Patrol. But those are some of the other projects that we had programming before that we're going to try and reestablish and be moving forward with in the near future. Also, we're improving productivity through data-driven predictive policing. That's kind of a fancy word for our crime analyst. It basically figures out where the stuff's happening at a lot, and we can target more of our resources in the spaces where things are, not where our perception is that they are, but where they actually are happening. And so that's what our goal is really focusing towards in having our crime analyst. The '25, '26 proposed, the staffing reduction, the jail manager, and the over-hires. We have one overhire, and that's currently in dispatch, but that's not, we're not going to have any cuts necessarily, but that's to maintain because right now, as it was in the past, when someone took a time off, just regular days off, that was automatically filled with some other person had to then come in and fill, and it was automatic overtime. We were ending up paying more in overtime than we were to have an actual another person on staff. So it made more sense to have that extra body there, and it also helped with all that staffing and the services because then we had three people in the center, and someone could take breaks while people were still managing the radio and the phones at the same time, which is more of a model that other larger agencies also handle for our call volume as it increases. As far as the other staffing and the jail manager, it was decided that we had one person that was doing the job of what four people could be in the oversight, as many of you are in other businesses and know that span of control, one in charge of 14 is not realistic. So now we would have one in charge of three, which three, span of control of one to six is actually ideal, and so that's more of what they'll be doing. So it made sure we also modeling what the patrol schedule works, right? We have one sergeant for every squad. It would be exactly the same in the jail. It's worked very well on patrol for many, many years, and so that's what we were trying to attempt and model with that span of control and supervision. And then professional services for social media and wellness, we've decreased that. We had someone that was on staff for wellness. We are still having them as a resource, and they are a need base now instead of having them just in the building. So they still are available for our staff when needed. They've helped a lot with debriefs, critical debriefs. They helped a lot with our peer support program. They are still available to come and do some of those trainings as we need them, and we'll pay as necessary and they're needed versus having them just be on contract and paying for their services to be in-house on a regular basis. So we wanted to look at that, and they're still available also if an officer was in need of that and needed to have someone to reach out to, and that's another process that's still available, but again, we're not paying on a contract at a flat rate. And the summary of additions, our goal is to have two more correction sergeants, as I expressed, so we've added four, one on each squad. We moved two of the corporals now up to sergeants, and then we would have two more added sergeants for that span of control, one on every squad, four, and they would all be doing all the rest of those jobs of billing, contracts with the other jails, medical, with dealing with hospitals, all those other pieces in the jurisdictions. Upgrade the corrections, corrections corporal, evidence tech from full-time... Upgrade the corrections, corrections corporal, evidence tech from part-time to full-time. She right now currently is working 30 hours and has full benefits, so it would be just increasing her by 10 hours. Our goal would be also, in the event that we increase, we do not have to have a sworn person that now does our speed cameras, so we would have the ability to use that person with the proper training and credentials to also fulfill a lot of those hours instead of being an officer off the street. So if we do have that opportunity to add those cameras, they would be able to work on that as well. We would like to increase, we did talk about increase of jail costs, added in that booking fee is for insurance as well as some of those other parts to what it's going to cost for upgrading and increase to fleet fund, being we need those cars for the take-home vehicles in that process because that's not inexpensive. So, any questions I can answer for you?
I'm not seeing any. Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
And Chief Lane is joining us remotely, and Chief Lane, I'm happy to control the slides for you.
Okay, I think I just have one slide, so that should be pretty easy. Good evening, members of council. Ben Lane, Fire Chief of Eastside Fire and Rescue. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I just want to echo the statements of Deputy City Administrator Snyder early on, the challenge that the city of Issaquah has gone through in this budget process. Eastside Fire and Rescue has also gone through a significant budget challenge this year, and so we've had to adjust some of our priorities going into 25 and 26. Our top priority, and again, thank you to the city for also supporting emergency services. So our top priority going into 25 and 26 is to maintain our emergency services and our critical non-emergency service levels. Our emergency services would certainly be fire, EMS, and our technical rescue response, hazardous material spills and the such. Critical non-emergency service levels, that would be our mobile integrated health, our wildfire mitigation specialists, and our fire marshal's office, specifically our plan reviews and our fire inspections. Given the challenging nature of this budget process, one of the things that we will be focusing on in 25 and 26 is to explore alternate funding structures. I look at this really in two phases. One, as you know or may not know, Eastside Fire and Rescue has no taxing authority, so our ability to generate revenue is very, very limited. One of the revenue sources we do have is our fee for transport, and the board did support increasing our fee for transport rate going into 25 and 26, so we're projecting a slight increase in revenue there to offset our partner costs. And then we are also looking at reaching out to our partner cities, the city of Issaquah, Mamish, and North Bend, and seeing if we can do some work around aligning our fire fees, our plan reviews and inspections. We believe that there are some ability to capture some revenue there that would also translate to a reduction in the partner contributions. Bigger picture, long-term sustainability would be looking at maybe a different funding structure for Eastside Fire and Rescue. Some of the things that have been discussed would be at other cities have discussed a public safety levy, looking at annexations into a fire district or a regional fire authority. So I see this as a quite robust discussion, but it's something that we're hoping to accomplish over the next couple of years, just given how challenging this particular budget cycle was, and the goal is for the organization to not be in the same position in the future. And then last priority is to address the critical apparatus and facility needs. There was prior policy decisions that were made at the time to address the critical nature of all of our partner cities and districts. Unfortunately, we were, we got off track in our ability to properly fund and replace our fire apparatus, so we're looking to get that back on track. We've adopted a new policy practice. Instead of purchasing those outright, the board has supported a finance model. This allows for more of a smoothing method to reduce a quite volatile pricing structure for purchasing apparatus. And then lastly is our critical facility needs. As you know, there's been discussions between Eastside Fire and the city to address Fire Station 71, but in the building that I'm currently sitting in here at HQ, just a couple blocks away, there's arguably quite a few things that we need to address. So this budget process starts us down the path of working towards whatever that long-term solution is. And again, I just wanted to express my appreciation for the EFOR board directors from the city of Issaquah and deputy director or deputy city administrator Andrea Snyder for their engagement and involvement in our budget process. It certainly was a challenge, but I do appreciate their support through that, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm not seeing any questions, Chief Lane. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi Schorn, Court Administrator and Judge Stewart's here to help answer any questions tonight. While our caseload has steadily increased, we've utilized state funding to help build a community court program. We've incorporated technology that allows us to be 100% electronic, and we now offer court customers and community partners a hybrid courtroom model, all completed with a very lean but experienced team of court professionals. We have five FTEs, three part-time team members, and a part-time contracted security officer. Our top priorities are to streamline interpreter scheduling and bring down costs. I'll expand more on this in the next slide, but there is currently a national shortage of certified court interpreters that is steadily driving the market for language access to higher and higher hourly rates. We are implementing a new software program and app that we hope to help steady the market. Our next priority will be to onboard a new statewide case. The administrative office of the courts is upgrading their 30-plus-year-old system with a Tyler Technologies product. There have been several project delays, so much so that our probation officer, Melanie Vannett, has been on the project steering committee for over a decade. The first two pilot courts onboarded late last year, and nine Eastern Washington courts onboarded today. However, the project has courtroom processing shortfalls that we currently handle with our OCourt software program. We are one of four state courts currently providing business requirements to the state to build an integration platform with an API between OCourt and the new state CMS system. There will be significant training and mapping requirements and IT support needed to make sure we have a successful transition in 2026. As mentioned earlier, the city is considering moving the court to leased space at King County District Court. We will be working closely with IT for a smooth transition to bring all our technology efficiencies to the new facility, including video and remote hearings. We will also be prioritizing communications with the public, our community partners, and court customers regarding the potential move. As mentioned in earlier slides this evening, the court will work closely with the city in 2025 to implement an updated cost recovery model for court services with our partner The court has no significant budget reductions, but has captured all state funding in the budget, this budget biennium. As an emphasis is placed on public safety, additional resources will be needed to sustain court operations. We heard earlier tonight that Issaquah's police department is nearly fully staffed. As additions are made to law enforcement, the impacts within six months to a year have a downstream effect on justice services, and there is a significant need for additional resources to support the judicial branch. Since 2019, there has been 133% increase in DUI filings and a 27% increase in criminal non-traffic filings, such as domestic violence and theft charges in the city of Issaquah. Also impacting the court's caseload are changes in drug possession laws that now have charges once filed as felonies now being filed in. Based on the trends in filings, the court is requesting our current part-time .6 judicial assistant position, who has been with the city for 14 years, to move into an FTE specialist position. In a comparison study conducted earlier this year, the court is processing three to four times the annual case filings per staff member in the surrounding jurisdiction. So to continue meeting court mandated requirements and to support therapeutic recovery, the court is recommending a staffing increase in hours to help reduce filings processed per staff. In a different budget climate, the court would be requesting additional staffing adds to both probation and judicial support to align with staffing levels in neighboring courts. Our request in this budget is to help narrow the gap to allow reassignment of work mode by demand. By far, the largest increase in the past several years to the court's budget has been language access costs. Interpreter-related expenses have nearly doubled in the past two years. As mentioned, we are in the process of adding software to streamline interpreter scheduling and to reduce costs. The state reimburses the city for a portion of the interpreter expenditures, but interpreter reimbursements have not kept pace with the increases in hourly rates and the number of assignments. Next is alcohol and drug testing. We are requesting a budget add in response to increases in DUI filings and due to opiate and fentanyl prices. Some of the testing costs will be covered annually with opiate settlement funded, funding received by the city. This program is essential in complying with court rules to provide less restrictive pre-trial alternatives to jail while still protecting the community for the moderately at-risk individuals before the court. We appreciate the city and council continuing. Thank you.
I'm not seeing any questions here, so thank you very much.
Good evening. Stacy Van McInstry, Sustainability Manager. For 25 and 26, our focus of investment for the sustainability funds are on reducing greenhouse gas emissions to advance progress towards our climate action plan targets. Investments include programming, projects, and incentives. We will continue and expand programs that reduce emissions from the built environment, including energy efficiency and cleaner fuel sources for commercial and residential buildings. We know we must lead by example as a city, and therefore, we propose to invest in our own buildings and fleet to reduce emissions through renewable energy and to transition to electric where feasible. While waste is not a substantial contributor to emissions in our community, the impacts on the environment and human health are significant. Waste reduction efforts are very visible, and our community is desiring more programming. For the most part, there are actions that our residents can take with the proper resources. Our other major area of focus is a proposed investment focused on enhanced resilience in partnership with our emergency manager and our community organizations. This includes supporting the continued development of resilience hubs, exploring opportunities for microgrids, and advancing the resilience of our own facilities. For reductions, we have pulled back from one of our large program asks around residential electrification. While we will continue some investment in this area due to it being one of our largest greenhouse gas contributors, we anticipate pursuing grants and partnerships to fill the funding gaps. We reduced investment in a tree giveaway program, which is supporting progress towards our tree canopy targets. However, we have grant funding we can pursue as well as commit staff time to advancing that program. And then in terms of advancing or supplementing our budget, we are very fortunate that we have grant funds available that we can use to cover some of our staff costs, our Civic Spark fellow, as well as some of the programming that was originally proposed in the sustainability fund budget.
No questions at this time. Thank you. Oh, excuse me. We've got one.
Slow on the draw. And I know we've talked about this before, but if 2117 is passed, I'm presuming we have a Plan B for this budget, so maybe go into that a little bit.
Yeah, so as of now, we have full funding that we need for our programming in 25 and 26 through the proposed budget. If 2117 does pass and the Climate Commitment Act is repealed, we anticipate less access to grant funding in the future. That would be add-ons to what we've proposed this year, so more solar projects, more resilience programs, more incentives that go directly to community members. But right now, our budget, we see as whole for the programming that we anticipate moving forward in 25 and 26.
Thank you.
City Council Emily Moon, Public Works Director. There are six divisions in Public Works, so we've given you seven priorities from those divisions. Our first is to continue our work to implement our new asset management system. We went live recently with that system. It's helping us to track our efforts and to schedule our resources better and to forecast future needs. Second is to ensure compliance with MPDS, which is the National Pluton Discharge Elimination System, and that's our regulatory environment for all things stormwater. Third is to construct the Newport Sewer relocation, which is the first project in a series of projects related to fish passage from Washdott, and so we hope to be underway with that. We're starting design this year. Number four is to perform water reservoir rehab. This year, we did an evaluation of water reservoirs, and we now have a list of things to do to improve each of those critical infrastructure sites, and that will include a variety of tasks, including improving security, doing some replacement of aged infrastructure, adding some dechlorinization, et cetera, et cetera. It's a very long list at multiple facilities. Number five is to complete and implement our utility rate study. We have that underway right now. We anticipate being back before you at the end of Q1, early Q2 next year to provide you with those recommendations. Number six is to update our SCADA and its related communications. SCADA is our water sewer and stormwater brain. It's our control system that allows us to operate certain features remotely and to monitor their performance. Number seven is to complete the I-90 Crossing Study. City Council knows we're in our early phase of exploration on that project, but we hope this will culminate with a recommendation of a future location for an I-90 crossing that will feature multimodal functionality. Summarize the reductions in Public Works. First, we have some staffing impacts. Three positions are being reduced. We talked a little bit in the opening about the Transportation Program Coordinator, which is a limited-term position that was to end at the end of this year. It is not being renewed or converted. A senior engineer from Transportation, fortunate to have a vacancy at the same time in Utilities Engineering, so that engineer will move over to that division. And then a shop, a position which services both Public Works Operations Divisions and our fleet shop. Metroflex, Mayor Polly spoke about Metroflex in her opening remarks. This is the on-demand transportation service that started this past year, year ago, and was due to be a two-year pilot. Professional services, we have reduced substantially in our Engineering Transportation Division for a variety of projects, including the concurrency policy and traffic impact fees update. And we've completed the technical update on transportation concurrency. Our next phase was to evaluate our current policy and make some recommendations, if warranted, for any adjustments to that policy. We're now going to do what is required minimally by state law in order to make sure that we have addressed any policy gaps under state law, and we're going to do that work in-house. We're also hoping that the Washington State Department of Commerce may have future grants that would allow us to do some additional scope in a future year to address the state's requirements under the plan for 2029 for multimodal. And then Bennett is going to talk soon about streets maintenance, so I'm not. And then Bennett is going to talk soon about streets maintenance, so I'm not going to dive into that right now. Some, yes?
Before we're going on, go ahead.
Thanks. If you could go back to the previous slide, please. So in regards to Metroflex, have we talked to King County about what we can and can't do going forward and attempting to maintain this service?
We have not yet started those conversations. We had a conversation months ago about future service expansion. We talked about the level of city contribution in comparison to other municipalities. We have not yet had a conversation with them about what it means to reduce a portion of the overall service budget. City is contributing roughly about one-fourth of the cost of this service right now.
Got it. And I understand that there are other communities that are not having to contribute that quarter. Is there, absent anything else, assuming that we don't have productive conversations with King County, when will this service end?
At the end of 2025. It was due to end. The budget for 2025 only includes a portion of the city's contribution. There's a requirement that we provide 180 days notice prior to the next scheduled service change by Metro, which has not yet been announced. And then we have some prorated costs as well.
How much runway do we have right now?
I would say we have about six months planned in the budget for 2025.
So we have six months to either figure something out with the county or shut this service?
I would say we have less than that to figure out.
That's why it's about runway.
Sure. So I would say we have a couple of months to figure this out and then provide that notice and not miss the next scheduled change in that 180-day window.
Thank you.
So I wanted to also highlight some additions that we have on the utility fund side. The Public Works Department is supported both by the General Fund and the Utility Fund and a variety of special funds. In the Utility Fund, we have proposed some additional positions. Two maintenance workers in stormwater utilities, and all of these additions are spread across the two years. So two maintenance workers in stormwater, an MPDS inspector that would provide some assistance to both operations and engineering, and then a sewer maintenance worker and also a utilities tech. And maintenance workers provide our day-to-day service, maintaining all of our infrastructure. The MPDS inspector would also help us to make sure that we are performing the necessary compliance inspections. In stormwater in particular, we have had a huge increase in the number of detentions, treatment, and flow control devices in town. For example, in 2018, there were 228 of those devices, and today we have approximately 425. New regulations are constantly changing, mandating that we build more facilities, that we also design them to be larger, require them to have more inspections, et cetera. So our stormwater fund is in need of more assistance to keep up. On the, the same is true on sewer in terms of, we are not meeting our targets for inspection goals and maintenance schedules. And then on the water side, with the proposed utilities tech, there have been a lot of changes in water regulations over the last several years. Our last utilities tech was added in 2016. And if you think about all the changes with lead copper rules and PFAS and required amount of sampling, reporting, inventory management, and the customer service that comes with our water utility, all of those things have grown in terms of the time demands. And with that, I'm going to ask if Bennett Ashbaugh is...
Well, before you go, we've got a question.
Can we talk about the additions to utility staffing? And I guess I'm really curious about two things. One is, when are we scheduled to do another rate study? Because we fixate a lot, or talk a lot about the General Fund, but the enterprise funds are just as significant, and particularly since we're looking at raising utility taxes. I'm just curious about what the next rate study would look like, and what do we think the impact of these new positions might be?
Yeah. So the new, the rate study is underway right now. We plan to bring recommendations back to you at the end of first quarter, beginning of the second quarter. City Council has adopted, in our ordinance currently, the 2025 rates. We have tried to balance to that. 2026 proposes the same sort of year-over-year increase, just as a way to hypothesize what we will need and to make sure we don't have irregular spikes in that utility rate. We know for certain utility rates aren't going to go down. The cost of services continues to go up. So we will be back with some updated numbers about long-term costs and how sufficient the proposed rate for 2026 is when we come back and at the end of Q1.
And just for this biennial budget, where we've got sufficient headroom in the utility budget and that fund balance is, et cetera, to cover this?
We do, but that's a short-term picture. We have outstanding and very large capital projects that are coming in some funds that will drive rates or our need to borrow, and thus rates. And certainly, our operating costs have continued to go up. So we are expending fund balance in '26, '25, and '26 in order to make our expenditures align with that forecasted and adopted rate increase.
Great, thanks.
Okay, now we can move on to street operating.
Bennett Ashbaugh, Street Operations Manager.
First, I want to say thank you guys for the past years of investment and trust into the roadway maintenance. We've made huge strides in our mobility and ADA access, making more visible crossings and safer roadways. While we are looking at this graph of street operations and engineering operations, along with the concrete maintenance program and the pavement management program, you're going to see some decline in budget for the 2025 and '26 proposed budget. The reductions in the street operations and engineering lines mainly refers to a reduction in stock supplies. We'll make some changes to some less durable materials. We'll extend the life of certain facilities, and we are going to reduce the outsourced work that helps supplement our program during the summer season. As you guys are well aware, we have a very defined period of dry weather in Washington, and we have to get a lot of work done on the street maintenance side during that time. So to get that, to get all of those tasks done in a reasonable amount of time and get more done, we have hired out flagging operations, trucking operations, and other things like that. We're going to bring that back in-house now that we have a full staff, and we're going to hopefully get that same amount of work done. Over the past years, we have a relatively new crew. We hired seven individuals on our street maintenance crew out of eight in the last three years. Over the last three years, they've really advanced their skill, their skill level and their production, their production has gone up drastically. So I'm confident that with the reduced budget and with the, with the reduced budget and the street operations, that we can still maintain the city in a safe and reliable way. On CMP, the Concrete Maintenance Program, the orange line on the bottom, you'll see that there is a pretty large strike in the 2023 and 2024, or spike in budget. That was the ARPA funding increase. That was a huge investment for the city. We were able to not only support the pavement management program by updating ramps, regulatory ramps that were required to do, and we were able to make large investment in updating the drainage along those roadways and the curb and gutter. And then we were also able to get a high-edge mitigation contract for concrete panels that are lifted. And that contract was able to mitigate 29% of our known high edges throughout the city. That's a huge number for us, and we'll be conducting a new inspection in 2025 to see where we sit based on that. So I'm going to talk about PMP. So the Pavement Management Program is the green line there. You can see we had, we started off around 900,000 in 2019. We had the COVID impacts in 2020. And then in 2021, 2022, you guys and administration chose to fully fund that program. Over the last four years, we have been able to make huge strides in the pavement condition index. Now, I want to talk about that. So the pavement condition index is a numerical rating from zero to 100, that the worst possible condition being zero and the best being 100. You can kind of look at it as grades in school. So in 2019, we had a scan done, and our PCI was a 69. General practice throughout the, throughout the industry, throughout the country, is you want to shoot between that 70 to 75 range as a city to have a reliable network. Now, that does, that does change based on the road class, right? So in 2022, we got another rating, and our PCI jumped to a 76. And the reason for that is we did a huge focus on arterial roadways. Arterial roadways, our rating was a 66 on average. And as you guys may have been able to tell, we've done Sunset and all sorts of roadways throughout the city. And we also were able to secure two grants, the help of engineering, the NHS grants. We were able to do Southeast 43rd, which was one of our worst arterial roadways, and East Lake Samamish. So all of these different, the street operations, the concrete maintenance program, the pavement management program, all are tied together in a lot of ways. So we're in a position, if you look at the red line on the, on the graph that's at the 25%, that's what we've been focusing on. We've been focusing on the arterials that are in poor condition to try to raise that overall PCI. The 75% is keeping the good roads good, and that is an integral part of the pavement condition program. So as we reduce budget as needed, we are able to switch our focus on that 75% because we've made such an investment on the arterial side. So a perfectly balanced pavement management program is 75% keeping the good roads good and 25% keeping the bad, getting the bad roads better, right? So we are now going to move into that with surface seals, crack seal, other preventative maintenance activities that are really, you have to do to maintain the system as a whole. That is a, a surface seal program can run between $8 and $10 a square yard, and overlay is going to run between 35 and 45. So we can do a lot more, and we have communities that were all built at once. So we have Talis all built at once, all the roadways are built at once. Highlands, you have two different groups built there at once. We need to start breaking those roadways up so we can have a manageable program. We're not going to be able to do a full investment of many millions in those, in those neighborhoods all at once as they all fail at the same rate. So that, that is where we're going to move to in the '25, '26 season. We're going to focus on preventative maintenance, and we still have a few roadways that we are fortunate enough with the ARPA funding to get a head on. We've already performed all the concrete on Talis Drive, for example. We performed all the concrete on Ninth and Highlands Drive. So those are prepped and ready for us when we need to perform those overlays. So that's our, that's the plan moving forward. It's all part of the program. As we have fluctuations in budgets, we can make adjustments, and it all will feed to good roadway system. Any questions?
Oh, I waited long enough. Go ahead.
I would imagine that there's an optimal, if you look at the cost, like, let's say I look at this and I see that a road typically lasts 20 years before it's basically so cooked as to be very poor. So you could do a certain amount of improvements every single year, or you could do a certain different amount every four years, or a different amount every five years, or a different amount every 10 years to cover that 20-year interval. Is there an optimal from a cost standpoint? Like, I assume that, you know, earlier is less degradation, degradation is nonlinear to the system.
Correct.
So more frequent early, or more frequent smaller maintenance is better than waiting 10 years?
Yeah. So the degradation curve is this graph. So, you know, it plateaus in that good category, and then it just dives really hard down.
So the pavement condition index is proportional to the cost of getting it back up?
I mean, it's all tied together. So yeah, as you get further down in the fair and poor categories, you're going to have to do extensive patching to be able to just put two inches of asphalt on top, right? So you're going to have to do structural repairs once you get into the poor and very poor. And at this point in time, that's also triggering some pretty significant stormwater upgrade requirements as well. So we want to stay ahead of them. We want to break them up as much as we can. But yes, the optimal time to do anything on the road and to extend that life further would be in the good, the very top of the fair category. Unfortunately, our system is doing really well at the time because of our investment.
Thank you. That's, that helps me understand.
Who's next?
I'm Autumn Monahan. I'm the Administrative Services Director. My department includes several divisions, IT, Fleet, Facilities, Emergency Management, and Communications. Priorities for this proposed budget include, as mentioned before, facilities maintenance, following our facilities condition assessment last year, long-term space planning, which we've talked a lot about recently. We are now searching for a consultant and have just put out an RFP looking for assistance to help us with a community task force and some recommendations on what's next for City Hall and for the Police Building, as well as Fire Station 71. In addition, as you've heard too, our plans for moving the municipal court over to the King County District Court in a leased space. In addition, enhanced fleet maintenance. More resources are needed for that division. We have had the same staffing levels since 2004, but in that time, we've added 78 licensed vehicles to our fleet and more than 220 pieces of equipment. So more resources are needed to keep up with maintenance of our fleet. For IT, our priorities include cybersecurity as always, as well as supporting the SCADA project that Public Works has already referenced. And in emergency management, we remain focused on building resiliency, both internally as we prepare for a response for any emergencies, as well as getting our community ready as As for the reductions, it includes a limited-term position as a communications coordinator, some emergency management funds that have been helpful for us as we have attained state grant matches, and some capital projects for IT. A summary of additions include a fleet mechanic, more resources toward facilities maintenance to start making some headway on that condition assessment, and then the relocation of municipal court and potentially council chambers. Any questions?
Okay, we'll go. Deputy Council President?
So I had, I had quite a few questions about fleet. So just for my own clarity about what I'm reading here, it looked like there was a substantial increase in the fleet maintenance budget, maintenance. And as I understand it now, fleet comes from many different departments. Each department has its own fleet. So this is a way of putting all of those expenses together into one account. So this is a way of putting all of those expenses together into one account. Is that correct?
What you're seeing as far as the increased costs are mostly capital costs or acquisition of replacement vehicles. And a lot of those are also driven by other funds, like utility funds that can support them. So it's not all general fund. So we can provide a breakdown of that too for you.
Yeah, that would be really helpful to understand why there's such a substantial increase in what's happening there. And I would appreciate a lot more information about that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I also had one trying to understand with the fleet services, let me find the line. It looks like, so you get cost allocations from other city departments. And I'm showing in the 2023, 2024 adopted revenues was 5.4 million for the fleet fund. And then in 2025, 2026, proposed revenues is 9.4 million. That's a huge increase, so I'd love to know more about that and whether it's coming from any particular department and how we better understand that.
Sure, definitely. Thanks.
I'm here to talk about community planning and development budget. In terms of our priorities, of course, the number one priority is permit efficiency. So we've briefed you before in terms of the findings of our consultant work that we did, which outlined 12 different tasks that we have already undertaken. All our staff has formed different groups and is looking at holistically all our process and procedures. Of course, this is coming at the heel of doing a code update, also, you know, doing all our paper records into digitization and having them all on the SharePoint. So having those two large efforts underway. Now the time is for all the nitty-gritty implementation piece, which is no small task and feast to get into all the nuances of permitting. So we'll be spending a lot of our time and that will be in addition to all the permits that we'll be processing during that time to the order of, and all the emails and the phone calls, because CPD is one division of the city that actually brings in revenue into the general fund. We also support direct interaction with community in terms of all their questions about growth and development, what's happening next to my neighbor's property, what is all of this, why are these trees coming down, to, you know, all of that in addition to all the permits that we process, which the last we checked for 2024, we had 7,000 inspections, we had 4,000 review line items. So all of the permit process enhancement work is happening while we're also doing all our permit process, which our team is excited, you know, looking at holistically all our process and procedures. The second list item in here that is currently underway is the metal housing study. So we've had multiple meetings with the Planning and Policy Commission. We had a tour last Thursday. We are planning a tour for council. And that comes from the state bill that, you know, wants us to allow all the duplexes, triplexes, and cottages in all our single-family zones. So there's a lot of community conversations around that topic, a lot of practical implications that we need to study. That work is funded by a grant that we applied for Department of Commerce in the last biennium and that is funding. The remainder of work is staff-supported. The third one on this list is active transportation study that we have a phenomenal senior transportation planner. He took it upon himself to apply for this funding to the order of $200,000. If he are successful in getting that grant, there is a matching fund of about $60,000, but it would bring in $240,000 to look at all the, you know, our, our infrastructure or walk and roll plan that was done in 2015 establishes some of the things. So this would update a lot of the stuff for mobility and have community conversations about prioritizing the elements on transportation. But again, if we don't get the grant, then this work will not happen. In terms of reductions, our department has some staffing reductions of not only vacant positions, but staff that fill those positions. The current list here is the Department Operations Specialist, current planning manager, which is currently vacant, associate planner, and an engineer position. And then also professional services for all these studies, which Housing and Parking Study was in our budget from last year. Transfer of Development Rights was also part of the last year's biennium, but those are not reauthorized in the next, in the next biennium budget. We were contemplating a light rail station analysis and design study that was informed by the Light Rail Planning Guide that council adopted, so that will be deferred as well. In terms of additions, the first one is we've asked our long-range planning manager to take on current planning manager duties. A senior planner position will transition from part-time to full-time. And in your budget, you also see a permit center coordinator position. I think that's it for.
Before you go.
Yes.
Deputy Counsel President DeMichele.
So I know that we're in the process right now to envisioning for the light rail station and what that is going to look like. And then, so how does this reduction of a analysis and design study fit with the process that we're already in? If we're going to reduce, in other words, is what we're doing now going to go forward into the next step? Or are we reducing that?
We will be reducing that.
Thank you for that information.
Jeff Watling, Parks and Community Services Director, here to talk about the department's real quickly, some of the top priorities for 25, 26 for us across all lines of work within the department comprised of five divisions. First, and thank you as well, park, open space, and trail maintenance remains a high priority for us. I say thank you, I think, over the last couple of years with additional resources, including general park maintenance as well as urban forestry, our Green Issaquah program, we've seen significant improvements in the level of service within, within the park system. And as we now look at absorbing reductions, we're going to do all we can to not go too far backwards. Another priority remains park capital projects and investments with our park planning team. Two capital projects currently underway, a third one that we'll have underway early next year. So we anticipate in completing those three projects by the end of 2025. That's our Hillside Park Project and New Wetland that are near completion, the ARPA-funded pedestrian park senior center plaza project that's about to get underway construction-wise, and then the Rainier Trail Dog Park. We also have priorities for continued capital planning, for other investments that communities certainly identify as high priorities in having a high-functioning, well-performing park system. Next priority, continued emphasis in human services and how we serve this community, serve those in need in this community, really through a mix of outstanding grant administration and making sure those grants are achieving the outcomes we want, as well as our investments and excellent staff in behavioral health and homelessness outreach, which again, as programs, we've seen tremendous progress in over the years. So that remains a priority. Another priority within human services will be seeking a new model and a new partner for our emergency housing program within the proposed 25, 26 budget. We propose keeping some funding in there. As you know, we just completed our pilot emergency housing program with a partnership with Motel Six and saw some very successful outcomes with that, with that project and program. Our next priority is continuing to provide excellence in recreation programs and services and events. This is really through constant evaluation of those programs, making sure we are meeting community needs through a variety, all four of our facilities and a wide variety of programs. I would want to note, this work includes some proposed fee increases. You've heard some of the fee increases mentioned earlier, so as we get further into budget deliberations, the proposed fee increases we have in recreation will most likely be part of that conversation as well. Last priority is the arts and more specifically identifying an additional revenue source or sources to support the art fund. You know, from prior conversations we've had with you over the last couple of years, one of the recognitions we've seen coming out of the pandemic is the movie industry. The entertainment industry has changed. The primary funding source of the art fund is the admissions tax. That's a different rate right now, coming in at a different rate. And so knowing general fund is not in a position to support that art program on an ongoing basis currently, Amy Dukes and I will be taking upon ourselves and leading an effort to seek some additional external revenue sources that could help that priority program. As I now shift to identifying, just talking through the reductions, I just want, I want to give some context. As stated earlier, the general fund is certainly a big portion of this budget reset we're looking at in 25, 26. The Department of Parks and Community Services, its primary operational fund is the general fund. So as those reductions are made, just again, for context, we're absorbing through these reductions just over a million dollar a year reduction in the, in the general fund investment level into the department. And so that really translates to some pretty significant impacts into the service levels to the community. So going down this list and really I'm highlighting this by division within the, within the department, within our park planning team, these reductions include the elimination of a senior park planner position, leaving us with one park planner for that group to continue to do important capital planning and capital investments within the parks and open space system. It's just going to result in a decreased rate of work and projects that we're able to get done. Within the park operations division, the elimination of a .75 full-time maintenance worker two position, as well as some reductions in part-time seasonal staff. We're also looking at the expenditure, expenditure-wise within that division, reducing some of our watering, our irrigation, and our turf maintenance practices throughout the park system. This is going to result in come summertime, some of our streetscapes, some of our turf areas taking on more of a brownish tint throughout the summer months. Within recreation, the proposed reductions include the elimination of one of our recreation coordinator positions. This will result in reduced programming levels throughout our four facilities, namely, as the rest of the coordinating team, the rest of the programming team absorbs that, absorbs that loss. Within human services, we are looking at proposing to resize the leadership team within that division with the elimination of the behavioral health supervisor position. Previously in the 23, 24 budget, the leadership team within the human services division was Monica Negrilla as manager, Brenda as the behavioral health supervisor, and Hannah as the human services coordinator. This budget would resize that group to two individuals. It would be Brenda and Hannah. Again, two incredibly capable professionals, but I would note it reduces our capacity within that, within that group and within our ability to respond to, to human services needs as they, as they arise. Within arts, as was mentioned earlier, a reduction in our grant program in 25, 26 by 35%. I would note in this, along with just general grant reductions, this 35% reduction is really representative and reflective of what the admissions tax can afford. So what we're proposing in 25, 26, while we're going out and seeking additional revenue sources, we are proposing a 25, 26 budget that is able to live within the admissions tax revenues. So it will not, though not directly benefiting the general fund, we're positioning that arts program and that arts fund not to be reliant on the general fund for 25, 26. And then last reduction, as we look at all of our divisions absorbing a pretty sizable reduction within the department, we took a look at the department leadership team and reduced the size of that group with the elimination of the recreation manager position. As we again absorb a 15% reduction, we wanted to make sure that we were not disproportionately cutting, reducing all frontline services in what we do and the services we do across those five divisions and to, and for the community. This will reduce our department leadership team. The rest of, of the managers and myself will work at absorbing that and making sure that our recreation team and those recreation facilities, excuse me, still get the quality leadership and management that they need and that they deserve. Lastly, two additions I wanted to note, both of these would be requested expenditure increases that also bring with them grant funding being proposed for both of them. So first, with the success of Green Issaquah, we're proposing to increase that from a .5 FTE to a .75 FTE position. We've had such great response from the community, residents and business community, to our Green Issaquah program. We want to increase the capacity of that coordinator. Again, that would be grant-funded. The next addition, also grant-funded, as the, we've been working on the Urban Forest Management Plan that Services Safety and Parks Committee will be seeing next month. One of the recommendations, not to spoil it, will be completing a tree inventory. We would like to do the first phase of that tree inventory in 25, 26. And again, go get some grant funding to be able to get that done.
I've waited long enough. Thank you.
I believe Andrea, going back to you.
So last slide, because there are smaller departments, thought we'd just combine them and provide a high-level summary for the exec department, HR, and finance. So we have reductions, we've already talked about those positions unfortunately. Then we also, similar to what Director Watling was just talking about with the reduction to the arts grants, we've looked at those community groups like Friends of Lake Sam, Fish, Isqwa History Museums, and the city provided grants to those community groups were decreasing by 12% in 2026. The reasons behind this is that in order to balance the budget for 25 and 26, we asked our departments to provide recommendations for reductions around 12%. And so we wanted, while we had to do layoffs and cut back costs, we felt it only appropriate to ask our community partners to do the same. This allows them 2025 to figure out how they would deal with a decrease in funding from the city, whether that means changes to their operations or other ways to fundraise for their organizations. Also, reductions among these budgets, the three departments, rightsizing legal costs. So in the past, we've paid a lot more for legal costs. We've had large litigation budgets, for example. So the budget includes, the proposed budget includes rightsizing those legal costs to more of what our actuals were in '24 and what we predict moving forward. And then our training costs, we've had large unspent budgets in HR and training, and so we're rightsizing those to about what we had anticipated. Summary of additions to these budgets, we talked before about the public defender and prosecutor contract increases. While that's a cost for municipal court, it comes out of the exec department budget. And then also the equity assessment. So we had said in the beginning that equity was one of the budget priorities for Mayor So we had said in the beginning that equity was one of the budget priorities for Mayor Polly for this proposed budget. The equity assessment, you may recall, we discussed as a priority from the administration in the city council retreat back in July. At that time, we had identified the equity assessment to be very robust and thorough and cost $250,000. In the proposed budget, we've reduced that amount to $50,000 so that we can continue to try to make progress on equity. We hope for this equity assessment is that we come together, use that professional service dollars of $50,000 to establish goals for equity and identify areas of needed improvement to reach those goals. That's it on the department specific budget breakdown. Any questions at this point before we move on to next steps with the budget?
Not seeing any right now.
Great, thank you. So there's a lot that we did not solve with this 25, 26 proposed budget, and there's a lot of future work that we want to discuss as we move on past this budget adoption process. One of those things, I'm going to go back to the structural deficit, and we've talked about how those expenditures are rising faster than our revenues are, and we believe that this is a revenue problem because Washington State restricts our growth in revenues. And so what we would like to do is the administration is come back and talk to council about how to address the structural deficit, especially as we progress through 2025 and 2026, in advance of that creation of the 2027, 2028 budget. So looking at the structural deficit is something that we want to continue those conversations with you on. Also, as part of addressing the structural deficit, we would like to come back and talk about revisions to our financial management policy to address the construction sales tax. In the past, the city of Issaquah has balanced our operating needs off of what we've received in construction sales tax. And while that's a, it's a volatile revenue source, the city has experienced great growth over the past couple of decades. It was less volatile than what we see today and what we're predicting in the future. And so we need to shift and change our relationship with this source of funding so that we don't end up in a position where we have to make dramatic cuts just because construction has fallen. Another item that we'd like to solve in future work that isn't resolved with this proposed budget is capital funding. We've been talking with council about needed public safety facilities funding. As I said earlier, those assumptions are not in this budget. We've talked in the past about what could that funding source be? Is that a, is that a bond or what is that? Those discussions, we'd like to continue with city council. We've also talked, as you recall, with the community task force, capital financing task force, long-term funding for parks and transportation, which are also big expenditure areas in our budget. Last year, city council passed the transportation benefit district sales tax on transportation. That's been really helpful. We've put that to good work in the proposed budget, but we have continued needs in transportation that are very expensive, and we'll need to address that sometime in the future.
And before we move on, question?
In terms of future work, we have a presidential election in a little, couple of weeks. Could you talk about how the administration game theories are kind of plans for potential financing through grants depending on which administration might win or which party might win? And I've heard a lot from staff tonight about positioning themselves for these grants and, you know, to, to make sure that we get that funding. If you could talk a little bit about that in general, I'd appreciate it.
Well, the city's been very fortunate with grants. We've gotten pretty good at applying for them, and that's great. We also, with grants for capital projects, it may be that if we don't achieve funding for certain capital projects, then we push those projects into future years. So those are some of the options, but I don't know if City Administrator Bob Quitz wants to add anything.
I haven't said much tonight. I want to contribute to the cause. Clearly, on the national level, there are two very different views of the world, and I think as those views of the world are measured by voters over the next week or so, they will have an impact. I think one view shows that there'll be continued investment by the federal government in a whole variety of things we've talked about tonight. I think there's another view where that investment is discontinued, or certainly discontinued in parts of the country that may be viewed as not needing it or not using it in an appropriate way. So it's difficult to have tea leaves and, and look at this as carefully as we would like, but, you know, the role of the federal government in supporting local governments is certainly on the ballot in a week and a half.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I have great trust that the administration is, is planning for that and you're positioning yourselves depending on how this election comes out. And I know that you'll do your very best to give us all the opportunities to have budget flexibility, so thank you.
Thank you, council member. Other things that are not addressed in the 25, 26 proposed budget that we'd like to continue conversations with council past this budget process are jail services. So you heard us say earlier that we are adjusting some of the contracts to try to make sure that we are covering the costs of jail services, but this is something that we feel needs further analysis. The cost for jail is increasing greatly, the insurance, the medical costs, et cetera, and we would like to take this opportunity to do an analysis to really understand what are those costs to Issaquah taxpayers? Are there better ways to do it, et cetera? So we think this is going to be an ongoing conversation we'll have in the next biennium with council. Then, we talked, one more?
Thank you. When we look at that jail service analysis, do we put in the, some type of accounting for the fixed costs that we as citizens have put forward to build that jail and maintain that facility along the way? And I know that when we do contracts, sometimes it's just the cost of the service to get UPS to deliver our package or what have you, but you can comment on that, that'd be much appreciated.
Certainly, facility costs need to be part of this analysis. When we've done a back-of-the-envelope analysis for the preparation of this budget, we did include some estimates for facilities. The jail facility needs a lot more investments moving forward as well, just like the rest of our facilities and infrastructure. And so that is part of the total cost of providing this service is, is the facility's cost, and is something that we would be sure to include in further analysis. Other things that we talked about, I know council had some questions about this evening, is fleet fund. We have provided a fleet study over the past year or so to better understand what the costs are of managing the city fleet moving forward. And while there is a large jump, as was preserved in this fleet fund budget, our fleet study would suggest it's not large enough. And so there are, we anticipate additional contributions we will need to make in the future in order to right-size the fleet fund with the assets that we have, replacement of those assets, maintenance of those assets, and of course, future purchases according to our needs. So that is something that we do anticipate coming back. It is a liability that we have not fully resolved in this proposed budget. And of course, we will come back to council with more information as requested on the fleet fund and what's driving those costs. In addition, I believe Director Watling already talked about the art fund with the revenues declining and certainly not growing with related expenditures. That's a future conversation we would like to have with council to understand what's the council's will with the future of this fund. Similar, but to a less degreed cable TV fund, the rules around cable TV fund have changed with the FCC and what we can do and what we can't. We may just absorb that into the general fund. We can talk about that in the future, but that's something that we'll want to resolve in the next couple of years. And then labor contracts. We have a couple of labor contracts that are coming to council this fall, in the next month, really. Those are each one-year labor contracts. They don't cover the entire biennium of this budget. Those labor contracts anticipate a 3.8% cost of living adjustment, just like our non-represented employees, but it remains to be seen what that liability would be a year from now as we need to go into renegotiations and how that would affect 2026. So that's still something to think about over the next biennium, 25 and 26. Now, as we get past those big concepts and things we need to resolve in the budget, just looking at forthcoming legislation and council action on the proposed 25, 26 budget. Of course, we have the list of ordinances that we always do with every budget, just wanted to make sure that you were aware of what those approvals that would be looking to council for. The budget schedule, here we are on the 28th, that's highlighted on this slide. We have public hearings on the budget and the property tax on the November 4th city council meeting. Plenty of opportunities for budget deliberations between now and when we would anticipate adoption on December 9th. If council is ready to adopt the budget on December 3rd, we won't wait for December 9th. We can, we can do it early if council chooses, but we wanted to just highlight all of the opportunities for budget discussion and deliberation moving forward. And just a reminder of what some of those overarching policy questions are for city council during this deliberations process. Does the city council agree with the budget priorities reflected in the proposed budget? And is the council supportive of increasing revenues with the increased utility tax, property tax, and the CPD technology fee? That concludes our presentation tonight. Are there any questions?
Great, so we'll start with council questions, and then we can go to public comment. I know we had a lot of questions that we're able to ask during the presentation, but does anybody have anything outstanding at this point? You look like you're about to raise your mic.
Yeah.
Well, I just, I have lots of questions, but I don't know if I should. We also have like the question portal, so I was thinking maybe they might be more appropriate there.
Great, yeah. Any detailed questions council may have? We have in the past, we're going to do it again. I believe Suzie just sent out something to council where you can go ahead and type in your questions, and we will provide those answers through the information at the next council meeting or as that information becomes available during the deliberations process.
Okay, so with that, we have been reminded that we can ask questions via the portable, and then those will definitely come back to us in future packets as well as interim as well. Okay, so we have an opportunity then for public comment, so I will again remind anybody if they are online, on the phone, you can hit star three or on a smartphone or computer, raise the hand icon or send the host a chat message, and those in the audience just get to raise their physical hand, because we need to do a little bit of work around here. Do we have anybody indicating desire to speak? Nope, nobody online?
Nobody in the audience that would like to speak? Okay. So, council, any levels of feedback or any indication of kind of conversations that you'd like to have? I mean, I know we are very early in this process, but we are having a much later start to our budget season this year, and so it's going to be important for us to get focused on what we see as the policy questions and kind of how we're going to approach our deliberations here pretty shortly. So, go ahead, council member Mars.
So, pardon me. I assume that we're looking for feedback on the two questions that were listed in front of us. So, does the council agree with the budget priorities reflected in proposed budget? Generally, yes. I have specific concerns around Metro Flex. That's the piece of it that I want to see us try to work a solution with the county. I don't want us to give up on that merely because right now we're at a financially disadvantaged position. Let's get, let's get a good conversation going with the county. Other than that, I like what I've seen in terms of priorities. There are some bigger long-term capital questions that are really part of a separate conversation that we've been having in parallel to this, but in terms of the operating budget, I was very, very happy to see when I looked at the per capita expenditures in real dollars, not, we had, we had in recent years been slowly creeping up in that number, and it hadn't been growing rapidly, but I hadn't liked the direction it was going in. And this upcoming budget, what's been submitted, it's completely flat for both revenues and expenditures, and I think that's really important, as I've said before, to the public. You know, there's a perception out there that government grows to fill the space available, and we can just demonstrably show that that's not the case, that we're being careful, we're being judicious stewards with the public's precious tax money. And so I think that those, the general priorities and the general size of what we're looking at in this process that we're going to be going over in the next month or so, I'm very comfortable with. And then the revenues, I'm also comfortable with the proposed increased revenues. I think these are, again, looking at an overall model that we are keeping the size of government reasonable, I think these are a reasonable and spread of regressive and progressive ways to attach this, and the regressive ones tend to be fees rather than, you know, what I think it was a head tax or a flat tax. So I'm, I'm comfortable on both of these policy questions. Generally, yes on the priorities and, and yes on the funding. Thank you.
I don't think that will be the last time we hear about Metro Flex, so thank you for starting that out. Council member Hall.
I actually did think of a question I want to ask that might influence how I think about the second policy question on revenues. So I noticed when we were looking at the utility tax spread amongst cities, there was a lot of variety in terms of whether it was the same across all the different utilities or if there was different. Someone like Seattle had much more in, or higher in like water as opposed to like cable TV or something like that. So I was just wondering in kind of our analysis of where we should set utility tax rates, did we consider something other than kind of uniform 6% across the grid or some sort of staggered arrangement of percentages or? Walk me through that a little.
We, we did-
And that's a lot, so if we need to revisit that question, we can too, sorry.
Great, great question, thank you, council member. We were, we were really trying to look at what was easy to implement, what didn't put a particular strain on one type of utility over another. And so I think in the past, council has chosen to keep utility tax rates for city-owned utilities rather low compared to the other categories of utilities, which we did not really discuss tonight. So you see some of that, that thought behind what you see in the other city rates. You also saw some cities had really high for something like, say, water, but not as much for sewer or stormwater, and I think it's, it's just kind of dependent on what the philosophy is at the time. We were really looking at, how, how can we make something that seems reasonable, keeps the tax rate about on par with what we see as other cities, in some cases less, and is also easier to implement and understand?
And I'll just jump in on that. Is the 6% the max?
The 6% across most utilities is a max, I believe. With city-owned utilities, we could go higher if we want to. Other types of facilities, we'd need to have a public vote.
Deputy Council President?
Thank you. Yes, I do support the priorities as they were presented, and yes, I do support increasing the revenues as presented. So I've just selected some things I'd like to talk about a little bit more in the area of those that I support, and I, I certainly support the proposal that's put forward for public safety. We've had a, a lot of work go into increasing our police department and making sure that we're fully staffed, and I think that investment that we've made in the last few years should be continued, and so I'm very happy to see that. I'm very happy to see the proposal for the court, and we've heard, especially at the Services Safety and Parks Committee, about the dire needs that the court has, and so I'm very happy with that proposal. I do agree with the administration on the Metro Flex proposal that was put forward, and you know I'm a big supporter of Metro Flex, but I totally agree that we need to talk to Metro and see if they certainly can fund that the way- and also meets a lot of our transportation goals, but the funding of that definitely needs to be transferred. Payment Management Program, Bennett, thank you so much for explaining that graph. I could not read that graph, so now I think I understand it a little bit better, so thank you. And I also wanted to comment on the commitment to making sure that the personnel that we do have are well-paid and compensated appropriately. We are a place where many, many of our employees have to commute because the cost of living here is so high, and so I think that we need to recognize that by making sure that the compensation they receive is, is appropriate and covers the additional costs that they have of, of coming here to work, and we certainly appreciate the employees that we have. So I do have some concerns that I want to talk a little bit about, and this is no surprise, but let's talk about the human services reductions. I appreciate that we're giving some of our, our organizations, our nonprofits in town a year to adjust for it, but there's, I just want us to think through. We have some nonprofits that are really dealing in basic services, food, housing, clothing, and the, their ability to serve the poorest among us is also preventive in, in, in that it helps people not fall out of below the cracks or not become in more severe trouble than they're already in. And so I'm thinking we have a year for them to accommodate it, but I'm wondering if we can also use that year to think about if we can mitigate that blow. And when we talk about equity, we're not always talking about treating everyone equally, and so I'm wondering if we can look at those organizations that deal with basic services and see if we can really mitigate the blow to them because every dollar that we can return to those groups will be helping someone stay maybe in their housing or be more food secure or those kinds of things. So I'd like us to look at that. I appreciate the approach to the arts. I am sorry to see the 35% cut, but I realize that we're going to be looking at King County's open door funding, and I would just ask that we monitor that and make sure that our strategy there is working, and if it appears that it's not, then we really double down on that arts fund review. I just want us to keep a close eye on that and just make sure that we're not setting up a, a situation of failure for that, for that, for the arts, because they're important to our community. I am concerned about reduction in the light rail station analysis and design because, again, we've invested a lot in studies to get ready for that light rail station, and I, I would hate to see us get a lot of work done and then come to a full halt. So again, maybe let's revisit that one more time before we do the final budget proposal. And then when I look at that undesignated Indian Fund balance in 2026 of 4%, my hair sort of stands on end. So, so that is worrisome to me, and I, I, well, first of all, thanks to everybody who worked on this budget. This was really, really hard work, and so I realized that a lot went into coming up with that final projection, but that to me is scary. So let's look at that again. And then I want to call on our city administrator because he said something at the all-city meeting that I thought needed to be repeated about, we're not going to do more for less, we're going to do less with less. You want to talk about that? Because I think that's an important thing. If we're going to reduce our expenditures and our personnel, we just can't, the public just cannot expect us to do the same job that we've been doing. So I'll turn that over to you for a little pep talk.
Well, I think you, you said it. You know, we were fortunate to have excellent staff. You've heard, you know, your leadership this evening under Mayor Polly's direction, but they all, we all work with extraordinarily talented people. We want to keep them here. We want them to feel that they have an opportunity to, to be their best professional selves, that they have opportunities to accomplish things, and part of our responsibility as management is to make sure that we don't ask too much of them, that we balance those resources, and, you know, sometimes we have to say no. And we'll have to say no to you, we'll have to say no to members of the community, you and your colleagues. We will have to say no to members of the community, and that's hard. Been doing this a long time. No one ever wants to hear no, but I think that's part of your charge as a council, as stewards of the budget. It's the mayor's role as the leader of the organization to, you know, provide that policy guidance day-to-day, and it's my role to help say no. So we're committed to that. We hear from our employees, you know, that they want to stay here, they want to be well compensated, but they also want to know that they can succeed with the work that they do and not be overwhelmed by taking on tasks beyond their, their scope or beyond the 40 hours a week or so we pay for them.
Okay, so we're starting to hear some themes, some ideas coming out. Councilmember Hall, do you have your more say? Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, let me just also echo, oh, you can't, no. May also echo Deputy Council President in just saying thank you to staff for your incredible professionalism and stewardship really over your departments and your budgets and helping us get through this process. So just thank you for everything. Thank you, of course, for Andrea and everything that you do for the city. I just think of the emotional labor of some of this work that you all have been involved in, and I imagine it, so just thank you for, for doing everything you've done and for being here with us as we make some of these hard decisions as well. So going through the policy questions, the first one, agreeing with budget priorities, in agreement with what's been said before, I think focusing on police, fire, court, jail, sustainability, equity, transportation as much as possible, paying staff fairly, these kinds of things seem exactly the kind of feedback that we gave you in the original council retreat back in the summer. So to me, it seems that the priorities are on track. I also am concerned with Metro Flex reduction. I think if we're unlucky with having conversations with Metro over the next few months, this kind of two-month runway we have, I would like to see what funding it ourselves, maintaining the funding that ourselves would look like and what kind of impact that might be, so we as a council can kind of judge whether or not that's worth continued investment from the city. Other than that, again, agreed with budget priorities. I also support, I also just wanted to say for the record, support maintaining the 15% general fund, Indian Fund balance, so thank you for making that a priority through this process. For the revenue increases, for the most part, yes, I agree with all three. I think for the CPD tech fee, I would like to understand what that really means in terms of the average impact on a permit and whether or not it could be seen as kind of a barrier to, to our customers from trying to receive permits. So I think just a little bit more information. I will submit that through the question portal. So I see you writing scribbling notes. I'll make sure to get it in there, so don't worry. As for just other comments to, for the future work slide, I mean, one thing I've really been thinking about, I've talked with you about this before, is whether or not we need to have a levy or a levied lid lift here in Issaquah specifically for public safety and recognizing the importance of public safety in our community and also the ever-increasing costs of public safety, including court in our community. I think that that's a conversation that is worth having sooner rather than later, and I just want to put that on the record. I think probably important to have in tandem to with whatever our facilities, if, whatever our facilities conversations are with Fire Station 71, because if you asked me between having dedicated funding for public safety or Fire Station 71, I, I need to think about that a little bit more. So I think we need to have kind of a more involved conversation with that next year, and I just wanted to make sure to say that for the record. I have a lot, a lot of other questions that'll be, are concerns based on some questions that I have that I'll be adding into the form because I don't know if they're necessarily concerns yet, but mostly about, well, and you, you recognize this many times throughout, how we think about construction sales tax in the future, also one-time adjustments versus ongoing adjustments. So it sounds like we are planning on kind of having, getting more in-depth and having those conversations, but also concern around the light rail, losing the light rail station analysis and design study, the housing and parking study, and reduced irrigation. Also kind of having brown bushes around the city also kind of concerns me because that is a very visible thing that the community sees, same with potholes, right? So these are other things I'd like to ask questions about and get more in-depth conversations with council about. Again, thank you to everyone. Thank you for the long presentation today, and yeah, lots more work to come.
We have dueling microphones, and I didn't see. Okay, Councilmember Hunt then. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for all of the information that you provided tonight. I firstly wanted to start off by recognizing the unfortunate layoffs that are in this budget and the mayor's comments about, you know, these were folks that were doing a good job for the city, and it was the position that we found ourselves with the budget this year that, that those layoffs were necessary, and I wanted to recognize the hardship of those folks, but also their service to the city. In the, on the first question about the priorities, I do agree with the priorities, especially the, the newer focus or the increased focus on equity and on sustainability were things that we've recently focused on more in our comprehensive plan as well to make sure that we're addressing equity and sustainability there, and it was also something that we talked quite extensively about during the update to our city strategic plan in that group, making sure that we are thinking more about, about climate change, for example, as that has increased in the community's awareness about the impacts of that, and then also with the new equity board, making sure that we're including that in our overall I have several things that I think I would like to talk more about with my fellow council members. Fleet, and so for fleet, there is this large increase. I would like to understand that more and understand our options more for potentially smoothing that out or phasing that in, just what are the options for that large increase that we're seeing in fleet? Tenant improvements, we have a million dollars in the current budget for tenant improvements over the next two years to a space that we, as the city, would not own for the municipal court relocation, so I'd like to understand that more and, and think about that from a policy perspective as investing a large amount of money in a building that the city, the city will not own versus making improvements to a building that we, we currently have. On utility tax, I would like more information and like to have a conversation just to make sure that we fully understand the impacts to residents, information about how many people would be impacted by the different rate changes and what the average household accumulated rate would be or the overall amount of impact to the different residents. For example, we have a 6% cable fee, utility tax, and I don't know how many residents are actually currently impacted by that, so just to get a sense of that for our residents. Human services, I would like to better just fully wrap our arms around what that will mean if we are cutting some of those services or some of that funding. And then the two studies that have been mentioned, the light rail, but also the housing and parking study, would like us as, as people that would be using the information from those studies and policy to think about what the impacts are for our future policymaking, to not have that information that we would gain from those studies and, and think through that. Payment Management, one thing I wanted to posit is that we had such a big, a big investment from ARPA and over the last couple of years, very visible, very appreciated improvements to a number of our roadways, as was mentioned, and so I think potentially with all of the other cuts in the budget, thinking about how we might use that as maybe to have, we had so many improvements that maybe we would take a break or slow down on some of the payment management if we are looking for areas to balance out other parts of the budget. And then lastly, so I do agree with the, the overall themes of the budget, as I, as I think I said, especially sustainability and equity. It seems to me that when we did our equity training, we, we were taught to think about the whole, all of the policies with this equity lens, and we've been trying to do that as a city, and it seems to me that the Metro Flex is a really important equity program that we as the city have adopted, as well as a sustainability program. And so if we are focusing on that, I would like to make sure that we're thinking about that cut as really impacting folks that don't have access to a car or, or are benefiting from it, and it's also important from the sustainability perspective. So I would like more information about the likelihood. I would like to get those conversations started with Metro Flex, Metro Flex to get information about the likelihood of this, of the plan that they might fund this, so we can factor that in, but I would definitely like to have that conversation. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Just a couple of things. I'll try and be really brief. I'm trying to rationalize a couple of things, and one is the statement that we're having fewer filings from contract cities, and yet we're anticipating the court, the court workload to increase, and I'm, I'm trying to figure out what we're doing different than other cities that we're seeing an increase in filings while other cities are seeing a decrease in filings. So something to help me wrap my brain around that. I am, as others, still concerned about the increases in fleet and facilities, and I'd really like a further explanation on what's built into that. And then I'm going to be a bit of a contrarian on Metro Flex and light, light rail station. I think Metro Flex may be a good program, but given our budget constraints, I'm not as sure it's one that, that we need to continue if we're going to pick up the whole load. And then I think I really want to understand the demographics of who's using it and how effective it's been in reducing trips, because I'm not sure that, that it's really, it is providing clearly a service to those in need, but I think it's also providing a service for those who are not in need, and I'm not sure that that's something I'm super excited about funding. The light rail station design can wait. It's still a long ways out. We've done some work. The world is going to change a long ways between here and when light rail arrives, and so I guess given our tight budget constraints, I think it makes sense to push this out. And then the one thing that really struck me on the priorities as identified specifically was, this is in quotes, but maintain investment in transportation as much as possible. As much as possible strikes me as, well, tell me what is possible then. It's a, it's a, it's a kind of a weasel phrase there, and I don't know what it means then. So kind of like, is it a priority or isn't it a priority? So I need some help in, in wrapping my brain around what do we think is an important priority around transportation? And then I'm going to kind of riff a little bit on Deputy President De Michele's comments. They're all good. No, this is, you know, the things that we choose to fund or, or to reduce fundings in, really, this budget is a manifestation of our priorities, and so what we're saying is, these are the things that we want to make sure we maintain, and, and as, as the city administrator said, there are some things we're just not going to be able to deliver at the same level because we just don't have the resources. So I think as we go through this process, you know, it's not just dollars and cents, it's actually services and not services. So that's, you know, what it all comes down to. Looked at the revenue stuff. I'm perfectly fine with that. I like the idea of staging in the increases over a couple of years in the biennium.
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. First, thank you to City Administrator Bob Kowits and Mayor Polly for your leadership during this difficult time. I know that a great deal of work was done, a lot of late nights with, with your staff and the leadership team. Like to acknowledge the entire leadership team for proposing a budget that allows us to, to continue to focus on our priorities as we go forward. I know that all of you did a great deal of work to try to find the, the cuts that would still keep the priorities of public safety, fire, police, and courts at a forefront and also have the environmental emphasis, emphasis in the- Like to acknowledge the entire leadership team for proposing a budget that, um, allows us to, to continue to focus on our priorities as we go forward. I know that all of you did a great deal of work to try to find the, the, the cuts that would still, uh, keep the priorities of public safety, fire, police and courts at a forefront and also have, uh, the environmental emphasis, emphasis and the other, uh, programs that are in there, including transportation. So thank you for all of your hard work. Um, I won't belabor too long, but just, uh, but focusing a little bit on what, uh, Councilmember Ray said, our, our budget emphasizes what our priorities are. And in Issaquah, we have a, a focus, a laser focus on environmental issues. And if we look at the sustainability programs that we're doing, um, it, that directly impacts the environment. We also need to think about the other environmental things that we're doing, whether it's tree canopy, buying open space for around, around the streams to, to keep the greenery in, in the city, um, reservoir infrastructure for water supply and large ca, uh, catch basins for stormwater. Um, as the climate gets more severe in terms of the, the storms, et cetera, et cetera, there's more runoff that needs to be accounted for and properly taken care of. So these are other environmental priorities that are hidden in the budget, but are all part of the green emphasis that we have in Issaquah. And I want to really thank staff for making sure that those elements were not, um, left off the, uh, the list because that infrastructure is so important to make sure that we're doing things the green right, right way uh, for our, our environment. And also the fish passage work, of course, is, is going to be an important element going forward. So, um, those are all just kind of hidden green things that are in there. We talk about all the visible green things that are out there, but the budget does have these other elements in there that, um, I know our citizens see as a priority. And we've got to make sure that, um, we're accounting for them in the budget and we can talk to our citizens about those other elements that are there when we're out in the public. Um, I'll just briefly talk about the, uh, reduction in the light rail station analysis. Um, certainly 2043 is a ways off, but I would just ask it that the, uh, light rail station analysis continue to coincide and be coordinated with the, uh, construction, the I-90 overpass, perhaps leading that by a year or a year and a half so that they work together in time and, um, are ready about the same time for, uh, presentation, implementation and a conversation, uh, in our city for our citizens to take a look at that project, uh, in-depth and they can help, uh, form that vision for that terminus. Um, finally, on the, uh, uh, sales tax revenues, I definitely think the enhancements proposed are appropriate. Uh, I would generally agree with them as, as they're put together. Um, just one last thing for the future of, of construction sales tax. I'm certainly, I'm interested in hearing the, uh, proposals by the mayor of the administration on how those funds would be used. I know you're going to come up with a creative idea, as you always do, to make sure that those funds, um, from construction go to support, uh, the same, uh, type of programs that, that make Issaquah a great place to live, work and play. Thank you.
Well, gosh, we're already in it, aren't we? I wasn't sure if everybody was going to come in and, you know, bring all of these great policy questions, but you can see, we obviously have a conversation to be had. So we look forward to working with the administration on that. We are reminded once again that we can, uh, ask our questions to the portal and get them over to Suzie and the budget team, letting your way. It will be exciting. Um, is there anything the administration needs other than that from us?
No, thank you very much, council.
Okay, well, I will also throw another thank you into our senior leadership team and staff and department heads who have come and, uh, shared with us and struggled along with us on this lovely, fun budget, um, situation. So very much appreciate your contribution as we sort through all of these pieces. So I think with that, um, yes, let's see, we've already done, uh, community comments. So going back to, uh, we've got good of the order. Any good of the order items? Okay, well, then I will note that we are adjourned at 9:05 PM. Thank you.